Welcome, everybody. We're ready to start our little session today. And before we get going, I ask the Vice Mayor to give us an update on some very important activities.
Well, thank you. Mr. Mayor, and as everyone on council and certainly most everyone in the city, I'm sure is aware, the one-year anniversary of the May 31st tragedy comes up this Sunday, and the city has engaged in a number of things to, in memory of the people and to support the staff. One thing I just wanted to mention for the people listening, at 4:06 PM on Sunday, 4:06 PM on Sunday, on the city's YouTube channel, on VBTV, and on the new website, loveforvb.com, there's going to be a special tribute for the folks who lost their lives and the folks who were maimed, and also the surviving employees and their families and all that. And it's going to be a very unique method to remember these folks. That's going to be different than a traditional memorial service. And I would just encourage everybody to do that at 4:06 PM on Sunday, VBTV, city YouTube channel, and loveforvb.com. There's going to be landscape and illumination tributes near Building 2, Friday through Sunday. A lot of this, obviously, has changed because of the COVID and the fact that we all have masks on. That's kind of the way a lot of stuff has changed. Everybody should have received a "forget me not" lapel pin in their package. And the city has done a great deal of work on designing this. And there was a great team that the manager put together from Communications, Parks and Rec, Cultural Affairs, Volunteer Resources, CVB, Public Works, and other offices, I'm sure I left some out, that have worked on this. So I just wanted to mention that, not only for the council but for the folks that are listening, that they're, we're remembering this tragedy on the anniversary and everything that occurred to it. The loveforvb.com site is up now, but it is going to have a lot more content starting on Sunday at 4:06 PM. And that's what I would encourage everybody to take a look at. So, that's it, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you for that update. Really appreciate it. Okay, at this point now, Mr. Leahy, go forward with your briefings?
Yes, Mayor and members of council. The first up is a COVID-19 update, and we have, I think, virtually, we have Dr. Lindsay, the Director of the Virginia Beach Department of Health, who will give us a little update. And then followed by three of our own staff, Aaron Sutton, Ron Williams, and Steve Culver. So, it's Dr. Lindsay.
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor and members of City Council. It's a pleasure to be with you here today. I want to give you a heads up that I have quite a bit of data here for you, in an effort to address some of the questions you've raised recently. So I will try to go through these slides very quickly in the interest of time, if you will bear with me here. I did want to at least start with some of the basic data. And if we'll move to the first slide. This is a breakdown of our number of cases and some demographic characteristics recently. As of 5/26, we've had 638 cases. We did experience a fairly large number of cases over the weekend, but we're working through those. It does appear that some of that is a reflection of the lag and we've experienced in the past week with our data system. And I'll be prepared to address any outstanding issues with this as we have time to look at this a little bit closer. Our average age is 51, and as you'll know, most of our cases, more than half of those are between 20 and 60 years of age. Next slide. Also, I wanted to point out to you a breakdown of racial distribution of our cases. And here you'll see a comparison of the number of cases in orange relative to the representation in the population. Among the white population, the number of cases are fairly, are less than the representation in the population. However, actually, I should say rather than numbers, the proportion of cases based on population is significantly higher in the African-American population, which is pointing to disparity in the impact to that population. Anecdotally, we are noticing a significant number of positive cases as we do community surveillance testing in Hispanic population. I don't have that graph up for you today, but so far, it's not being reflected in overall representation in terms of our numbers. But it is being seen at a state level, and we are concerned in ensuring that we continue to test populations that may be at higher risk. Next slide. And getting back to Councilwoman's question here, I thought it may be interesting to, for you to see, as I mentioned, that we have a very broad distribution of cases across the state. It is hard to draw a lot of conclusions right now based on ZIP code. That is, there are a number of factors that may go into that, including our population density. Some of what was reflected in the ZIP code map does overlap with higher areas' concentrations of our population, as well as we have factors such as facilities where, such as nursing homes, where there may be large numbers that also reflect the concentration, as well as whether or not the actual address that someone is listed at, particularly with a facility actually reflects our residents. Also, we're seeing in some populations a number of cases within a household, which may also increase counts. But that said, looking at the distribution map, you can see that we have a broad distribution of cases across the city. Next slide. Again, this again is kind of a cumulative summary of cases that we've had over time. The orange represents actual active cases that are in isolation now, and the blue, those that have now resolved and are no longer under isolation for infections. You can see we have a greater number of cases that are actually resolved at this point than active. Next slide. Given the limitations of testing, one factor or another way of looking at what is going on in terms of disease in our community that may be a broader, a greater indication of what's actually happening is to look at hospitalizations and deaths. And here, this is a distribution of hospitalizations. As you can see on this slide, the breakdown of hospitalizations shows that 59% of those hospitalized are among the white population, 20% African-American. Also, a slightly larger proportion of males, and of course, a larger proportion of elderly hospitalized. Next slide, please. And here, looking at tests, since this is something that we are tracking, you can see here a distribution of tests over time. And this reflects our nuclear testing, which is our gold standard. And the number of tests performed right now is over 10,000 tests. We have had a positivity rate that is now up to slightly over 3% compared to a state positivity rate of 14%. And this is a number that we want to watch very closely as we move forward with relaxation of our social distancing and other public health measures to ensure that we don't see a dramatic rise. We do it. Next slide, please. So regarding testing, as I mentioned, we have over a large number of tests performed. In the Virginia Beach area, we are showing the third highest district in the state for testing. This does not include serologies or antibody testing, as you may know of it, but these are not considered diagnostic, so they're not included in the overall percentage. Next slide, please. And in addition to that, I wanted to note that we have multiple private opportunities continuing to come online for testing. And also, at this time, as more private institutions come online, public health is focusing more on facilities and businesses, vulnerable populations with our community testing, and also outbreaks such as our long-term care or other vulnerable facilities, not only for outbreaks but to support them and trying to prevent them as well. Next slide. And this is just to kind of show you how that distribution of where testing is going on has shifted the, what you're seeing here is emergency room testing versus urgent care centers. And as we've moved to the right, we're seeing more and more urgent care testing coming online, which hopefully is a good indication that our access will continue to increase. And again, public health is focusing on, in collaboration with other partners, ensuring that we are making testing available in communities for those who may not have access. Next slide. I wanted to talk a little bit about modeling to address some questions that have come up in that area. And basically, there are two types of model, types of models that have been used in projecting COVID-19 activity in the country. One is a statistical model that's based on curves that looks at historic trends. Also, it factors in other issues such as policy responses and controls. One sample model that VDH has been looking at here, particularly UVA, is the University of Washington, the IHMB model. The other type of model is what we call a systems dynamic model. And it really assumes that there's an exponential growth in the number of individuals affected. And it relies on the estimates of the rate of spread of the disease to help predict what will happen in the future. Virginia uses as its primary model the UVA model, which follows this, which is this type of model. And also, a second model, example of this model would be one out of the University of Pennsylvania. I mentioned these two models because there is, these two models are also looked at. UVA also looks at a number of other different models that are provided across the state. There's a fairly long list of them to try to understand the dynamics of this system better. And the different models have different advantages, but as you can see here, in terms of kind of looking at the rate of spread, the systems dynamics model or the UVA model that we're using is much more beneficial. Both models seem to be fairly beneficial in terms of determining the degree of threat, the extent of spread, or the timing of these, and the severity of them. Moving on to the next slide, please. I just kind of listed here some of the limitations and advantages of the UVA model. A major one that I wanted to point out is that the UVA model does incorporate Virginia-specific data. So I'd mentioned earlier that the interest is in looking at not just what's kind of happening across the country to project, but actually looking at the dynamics of what is happening in Virginia. It also incorporates more about the, how the disease behaves, and incorporating a lag between exposure time and infection, which is rather unique to this model. And it does also, in that process incorporates this asymptomatic period, which is a concern when we think about transmission. The model can be adjusted to different policy parameters. And as we move ahead and gain more and learn more about what's going on with the model, we expect it to become more accurate over time, and that appears to be happening. Early parameters were kind of based on what we knew coming out of China or World Hearing, which there were some concerns about how accurate that information might be. And also, we have had some limitations in estimates of our counts based on limitations of testing here and across the country. Next slide. So the UVA model, as I mentioned, was developed by the University of Virginia. It is designed to evaluate policy options. So it is not really designed to say, these are the actual numbers that will happen in the future. It is more about if we do X, then what do we know, or what can we expect as a result of that? So it is meant to be an aid in looking at policy scenarios, what strategies might be applied, and what may have an impact in moving us in the right direction. The limitations of this, however, is, as we're trying to predict what might happen with a given scenario, is that there is a human factor, and it is very difficult to predict how people or businesses might behave, particularly as we move into the new normal. There also, at this point, is limited information about how test, testing, tracing, and our isolation and quarantine process will impact the model. But the University of Virginia is looking at, is in the process of developing scenarios to actually look at this as well. Next slide. So this modeling configuration does incorporate an initial infection period, assuming about a 15% detection rate. So that means that incorporated into the mathematics of this model, it's assumed for every case detected that there would be approximately seven initial infections. It also looks at, or assumes an infectious period of around five to 2.5 days. That's the timeframe of infection is before an individual is isolated and R0, reproductive number of 2.1 to 2.8. And I'll talk about that a little bit more in a minute. And also, it looks at confirmed cases to help calibrate. Once, once it has developed a spectrum of prediction, it uses actual case numbers to help calibrate its measures. And also, also looks at the duration and intensity of mitigations. Next slide. So this is kind of a list of the full parameters that are looked at. I won't go into great detail about this, but transmissivity, incubation period of about five days, looking at the infectious period. Again, having both of these is rather unique. But also, parameters around hospitalization, which are fairly set, looking at different, not only numbers of hospitalizations, but how many people are required ventilators, duration of hospitalization as well. Next slide. So the scenarios examined are as follows. It looks at the, looking from the beginning, it looks at two different mitigation lift dates. So this is the time in which we begin to open up the public health restrictions. And those dates that are being used in this scenario are May 15th versus June 10. And it also looks at what we call a rebound intensity. So as a public health, the public health restrictions are lifted, it looks at how much society returns to the pre-pandemic levels for interactions. Light rebound is defined as 1/6 of pre-pandemic levels, and a strong rebound is defined as 1/3 of pre-pandemic levels. And these have been reduced from previous predictions based on recognition that it appears that the rebound may be lighter than initially feared in early concerns. Next slide, please. I want to go back to R0 for just a minute. And R0 is really, the best way to describe this is, we're looking at the ability of how well this virus is being transmitted. So for every individual infected, how many people does, will that individual infect? And from this slide, you can see that prior to initiation of our social, our phase zero or restrictions with individuals staying at home, we had a significantly higher, looking at that dotted line going up, significantly higher transmission rate than currently. And immediately after reducing social interactions, we saw a dramatic drop in transmission rates. And you may have recall from previous presentations, I've mentioned that largely, a lot of the transmission was, appeared to be largely within households, and we were seeing a much low transmission rate, really coming all the way down, almost to a less than than one. Next slide, please. So here are some takeaways from this. We know from looking at the data that community mitigation policies did pause or reduce the epidemic and bought us time. This is really important because we don't, as we know, have a treatment, we're waiting and hoping that a vaccine will come on the horizon in the distant future, actually. And so the more, more time that we can buy in reducing transmission, the better. Also, statewide, the reproduction rate based on onset date dipped below 1.0 on May 10 from an average of 2.2 prior to May 15, which you saw in the previous slide. So however, there are some concerns. The data, other data does suggest that social distancing is already relaxing, and we're actually looking at some of the apps such as coming out of Google and what University of Virginia is observing. We are seeing that even prior to the phase one of our reduced restrictions, we're beginning to see more activity, more interactions, people beginning to relax the social distancing activity. And we can see that even in traffic as we go out from day to day. This is also coincided with an uptick in growth. However, we also know we've had an uptick in testing, so it's a little difficult to separate that out. Regardless, we know that we do expect a rebound, we expect our numbers to go up, it's a matter of how much. And the intensity, we cannot emphasize this enough, depends on how well people adhere to the other public health measures such as social distancing as we relax society. And also, we will, there will be some dependency on our case investigation and contact tracing, but that is not a panacea. It does not replace the need for society to continue to take preventive measures seriously. Next slide. And here, I just wanted to show a major concern with large number of cases has been exceeding hospital capacity. And as we look at what may happen moving forward with a light rebound, we can see that we stay well within hospital capacity. And that maximum capacity is at 120%, that top dotted line, which reflects the assumed ability for hospitals to have a surge capacity that's beyond your 100%. However, we never quite reached that maximum. However, with a strong rebound, which would mean that we are not following all of the mitigation strategies are as closely as we can as a society, we would well exceed hospital capacity eventually based on this model somewhere around late July or August. However, I would remind you that this is a mathematical scenario. This does not take into account other interventions to keep us from reaching that, and there would be all effort to do that, including reminding us as the community of the importance of these strategies, and really taking steps to never reach that, but without any other interventions. This is where we would be headed with a strong. Next slide. And finally, in terms of testing, contact tracing, contacted case investigation and contact tracing, UVA is developing a simulation model to estimate these effects as well. And we look forward to seeing those in the future. That's all I have for today. Thank you very much.
Dr. Lindsay.
Very informative.
I'll tell you, that was very informative with some very, very good, useful information. Anybody, yep, Mrs. Henley.
I thought it was particularly interesting to see those charts about Virginia Beach and how it actually has worked out for us. I'd love to have a copy of those. And I'm assuming that that analysis is ongoing, particularly after we, you know, see the reopening and whether there's an uptick or whatnot. I think it's really important for us to know exactly what's going on in Virginia Beach so we can better react. Thank you. That was good.
Okay, anybody else? Okay, thank you, Dr. Lindsay. Mr. Leahy, moving on.
Next up, our Director of Office of Emergency Management, Aaron Sutton.
Welcome, Aaron.
Thank you very much, Mayor, City Council. Just a quick update on some key things. Dr. Lindsay covered our current VDH situation, but at the state level, if not all of you caught, the governor has asked that Virginians ages 10 and up will be required to wear face coverings inside all brick and mortar stores, salons and barber shops, public transportation, and more, starting Friday, May 29. He did state exemptions that included not needing to wear them while eating, drinking, or exercising, or if you have trouble breathing or are unable to remove your mask, or if health conditions prohibit wearing face coverings. That was his release today during his press conference. And his press conferences are shifting from Monday, Wednesday, Friday, to Tuesday, Thursday at 2:00. The Virginia Department of Emergency Management provided us an update today. They received $74 million in CARES funding. Just a quick breakdown, $9 million will be allocated for planning and planning support to revise an account for COVID, continuity of operations planning and resiliency planning. $45 million allocated for PPE stockpile. $6 million to the 119 911 call centers. $2 million to purchase 1 million in MREs. $10 million for comprehensive public education campaign, and $2 million $10 million for comprehensive public education campaign and $2 million in GIS analysis related to contact tracing. So that was the basic breakdown they provided and for the Virginia Department of Emergency Management. Quick update on city response operations. Again, we're virtually activated. Departments are working on their reopening plans. OEM provided reopening guidance document for all the departments to be aligned with the governor's forward Virginia blueprint, address key considerations regarding facilities, people, policies, and protocols. That's kind of how we've broken it up for them. Highest priority, obviously, to be ensure, to ensure a safe and healthy work environment for our members and to ensure citizens are receiving services safely. In addition to the beach openings this past weekend, parks and rec dog parks, skate parks, tennis and pickleball courts also reopened. And the city is providing ongoing surveillance to ensure appropriate compliance to the executive order and rules that are set forth. Our building maintenance team is working very closely with departments and occupational safety to manage requests to install barriers in preparation for reopening. And priority is obviously beginning, being given to the departments that will have public interaction. City is continuing its citywide PPE ordering and ordering key PPE supplies right now. Facial coverings for our members, surgical and 95 masks. The process has been adapted a bit to address departmental reopening plans. Just means we're going to reprioritize as the shipments come in. We continue to place the orders. It doesn't always mean that we have received everything. So the facial coverings, while we want to get to a point that we will have three facial coverings for every member in the city, we have not received those orders. So reopening plans will be dictated around that as well. Plus, providing PPE as the courts reopen, the beach ambassador program, and again, the reminder of our election on June 23rd. The registrar's office is working diligently to address their needs, ensure the appropriate safety of the polling locations. And today is the voter registration deadline for the June 23rd primary. So Human Services continues to provide exceptional service, processing thousands of SNAP applications. To date, 5,236 SNAP applications have been received with 46% being approved. And the main DHS headquarters building is fully operational again. Last week, the schools distributed 96,166 meals through its food distribution program. The program will convert over to a summer model at the end of June with some slight modifications, which the schools will provide that information once their plan is complete. The city continues its childcare program through Parks and Rec with about 100 registered. And as always, we continue to look forward to the hurricane season, modifying our plans to address working in the new pandemic environment. And next week, I will be providing the hurricane preparedness, hurricane season briefing to you all to present the 2020 outlook and let you know some of our improvements from Hurricane Matthew as well as hurricane, hurricane season in the time of COVID. So thank you. If there are any questions.
Thank you. Any questions? Mr. Moss then, Mrs. Henley.
Before we implement the, whatever we're going to do, open the rec center, I would listen to you. I'd like the council to be briefed on just what those procedures are. That's a very difficult environment, both for employees and residents to control. So I'd like to us to be briefed on what that is before it's implemented so we understand that it's a high-risk environment.
So something I left out, the process that we are doing for the reopening plans. Every department will be submitting their reopening plans to the Office of Emergency Management for review and then providing the information, the consolidated information to the MLT for approval on opening and then the ability to provide the briefing to council.
On that one, I really would think all of us would want to see that before they open just so that we can be responsive to the questions. That's just a high-risk environment.
Absolutely.
Thank you very much.
Okay, Mrs. Henley.
Just three pages of very fine print to, to let us know what you all have been doing. I think it's very reassuring because it really appears that you all are covering everything you can possibly think of. And I think our, our citizens need to know just how detailed all of, all of these things are that, that the city is looking at. It seems to be so quiet and so forth, but that's good. And you all are obviously doing a good job. You've thought of everything. I'm impressed and, and I think we should all be really grateful to, to have people who are so thorough in looking at everything and trying to cover everything. Great job.
Thank you. Mr. Ox.
I've heard, see some concerns, and maybe this for the, maybe this for the, of the enforcement of the social distancing guideline at our open parks, at skate parks and parks and rec. I think one of the concerns is, yes, there's a, you know, no mask gathering, people socially distance, 10 people. But I think, and I'm not sure what the solution may be, but the, the state of. The skate parks or the open parks, the parks and recreation center, the issue that people have, I've received is that you have these, these big parks and only 10 people are in there, but there's a lot more room to accommodate people. And so people having to wait, obviously, convenience is, is a luxury right now. But everyone is waiting 30 or plus more minutes to, to get inside of these parks that can hold their capacities. And I'm curious on if the solution or what they do with some of the retail stores, Walmart or Target, if there's so many people within a square footage, then they limit how many people can be in a certain area square footage. So maybe something we may need to look at far to open, you know, outside parks, that is like the skate parks and things like that.
Something that we will take a look at since they just opened this weekend. Some of that feedback we're working through right now, and I'll get with Mr. Kirschman.
Okay, awesome.
Absolutely.
Good point. Ms. Abbott.
Thank you. I actually, I had a similar question about the parks because I'm getting, I'm hearing conflicting information, not from us, but from the residents. So can we get more clear guidelines on what is allowed at the parks and what parks? And then the other question I keep getting about parks is there's a number of neighborhood parks that are not managed or, they're not city parks, they're just parks that are in neighborhoods. What are our guidelines on those and are those open or, you know, I, I think, I just think there's a lot of confusion right now on the playground parks and the tennis courts and the basketball courts and that sort of thing. So I'd appreciate some clarity.
I'll take that back to, to Mr. Kirschman and, and we'll work through that, absolutely.
Because I got calls about it all weekend.
Absolutely.
And I was like, I don't really know what to tell you.
Absolutely, we will get that. Awesome, thank you.
Okay, anybody else for Aaron? Okay, thank you very much. Your usual outstanding work.
So Mayor and members of council next up would be Ron Williams, Deputy City Manager.
Good evening.
Welcome, Ron. How you doing?
Great. Just a few more updates that continue with our assistance programs. First, the housing assistance program. We've now granted 300 applications assistance for the housing assistance. You also received in your, on your packages on Friday, additional recommendation from Andy Friedman about suggested uses for existing funding and next year's funding that could continue that program. Right now, the applicant pool, we're able to meet the demand and we, we would expect that we'd like to see, we'd recommend that that carry out over the next couple of months and continue to provide housing assistance. The first tranche of the business assistance, the EDIP applications, will go to the Development Authority for their consideration for approval on Tuesday, June 2nd. There are 300 that have been deemed eligible so far for that program. And we'll, if there's additional monies applied, and as we understand, the next fiscal year, we'd like to continue that as well. You received a letter from, that we, Secretary Lane issued about, about the CARES Act funding, the 39.25 million that DCM Bradley has a team working through the eligibility for that and consideration of continuing additional assistance programs. DCM Chandler is working through guidance for, to bring through your recommendation and consideration for the, the personal property tax and real estate tax relief that, that you've approved. And so that'll be coming forward in a couple of weeks, right? And then lastly, of course, we did have a successful weekend. The weather helped us to make sure we didn't have crowds at the beaches, the reopening. The governor did visit us. He seemed very pleased with, with at least our first weekend out of the gates. DCM Cover will give you some updates on some specificity that we saw. We, we have seen that some of the items that we were asked to include in regulations haven't been included in a governor's executive order yet. And so we may need consideration for a local ordinance that Mr. Stiles does have some drafts on, based on those regulations that, that the governor asked us to put in there. We're in a little bit in between of a heavy hammer at the executive order, which is a class one misdemeanor for some of the items that he has. And if they do not include the specificity, we probably do need some more teeth and that's what law enforcement would give the feedback on locally in order to have that enforcement. But we had a good voluntary compliance for the most part, and I'll let DCM Cover kind of pick up on some of what we saw there.
Okay, any questions? Mr. Moss and then Ms. Abbott.
I have two questions. One, I assume that whatever the guidelines is for the CARE Act funding, that council will receive that and look at it before it's actually effective, I hope.
Absolutely.
And secondly, did you actually see the governor's presentation at 2:00 today?
Yes, sir.
Even though I'm sure all of you got an email from someone, and I don't want to repeat exactly what they said, but they referenced a characterization as to what he saw, the performance of tourism across the state this summer. Did he make such a characterization?
I didn't pick up on that. And, I mean, it was an hour long, but I didn't pick up on that.
Mr. Dillon just sent an email, like, I didn't watch it, I was at work, but said that the governor made some characterization about the state of tourism in Virginia as a whole in his talk today. And I was just curious if he did, I didn't see it.
If I could ask the Vice Mayor, can you give a synopsis of the governor's comments?
I watched it and.
Super, thank you.
And the one thing that he said that, that I thought was kind of interesting is first he, he, he took ownership for being out there without a mask and being mobbed by, by the crowds. And the mayor and I actually happened to be out there Saturday and we saw the governor and it, that is exactly what happened. I mean, he was walking down the boardwalk and people saw him and they, they just came up to him. And he didn't have a lot of staff with him, so he didn't have anybody carrying all that stuff. But anyway, when he did his, his, his talk today, he, he owned up to that. And then he said, I think the exact phrase was, Virginia Beach could be the model for the nation on how to reopen. And, and I thought that was pretty good. And he talked about how the other communities, if they come up with a plan like we do, we did, then, then they could do the same. So, but I didn't hear him say anything about the state of tourism.
Okay, I'm just, I've all got that email, so I just thought I'd ask while everybody was here.
Yeah, I didn't hear anything either. I listened to the most of it.
That's good.
Maybe I missed it.
No, no, it was wholly positive and it was a very positive visit. And I don't, he would not have let us open if he did not think that we could do it safely. And, you know, there was, you know, for the most, you know, tremendous amount of compliance out there. And he spoke to a couple of the young ambassadors that were there and got some feedback. And there was a very, and I'm sure, well, you know, Deputy City Manager Cover, but, you know, police were reactive and, you know, this is something that you can expound on when you come. But, you know, you know, the experience and the weekend was wholly positive. Okay, Ms. Abbott.
Ron, I have a question about the, the applications we received for the EDIP grant. How many people applied versus how many were deemed, I know you said 300 were deemed eligible?
So to date, so far, there were just over 500. And a couple of things that we're seeing is perhaps there are, the relationship between businesses, there might be multiple. And that, that, those are some that they're, they're, they're having to have further review. Some need more, more paperwork. We have that in the same case with the housing assistance as well. They just need more paperwork, so.
Okay, gotcha. I appreciate the clarification.
Okay, Guy, did you have a, Mr. Tower and then Ms. Wood?
Just a couple. Rhonda, how are we doing on the staffing for the review of the EDIS? Have we got enough people?
Yes, sir. Those, I mean, they've, the, the last 150 or so are under review now, but yeah, we've been able to, 300 are scored and ranked and, and ready for review based on the, on the guidance that the VBDA gave us down.
Okay, and, and I missed, when did you, did you estimate when Mr. Bradley's team on the CARES suggestions might make their report?
I did not.
I have a question for you, Ron, if you could, if you.
Mr. Tower, we, I think the ordinance that you passed last week, a resolution said to bring something back by June 30th. We hope to get way ahead of that. So I have a meeting tomorrow with the group and hopefully by next week, we're going to run it through Ron's recovery group and the rest of the MLT and hopefully bring it back by mid, mid-June. So right now, we're just getting inventory of all the possible.
Yeah, I'm just trying to get a general, thank you.
Okay, Ms. Booth.
I need to ask you a question about the assistance programs that you mentioned previously in the presentation. Do you know what the outreach strategy is for the programs that are being provided?
It was done mostly through all the different cities' communication channels. So, you know, of course, online and then, you know, we've had regular updates on it. So if anybody follows, you know, follows city council action or any of these reports, they've been there. But through our, our various ones, we did press releases when you all approved each program. And then they were also pushed out through social media as well.
And so if people need assistance, they should basically go on to the website to get that information?
The business assistance was posted the other day that you approved it for Economic Development's website, yes, virginia beach dot com. And then we all, and we also have it through VBgov dot com. And then, yeah, Department of Housing and Neighborhood Preservation is for the housing assistance.
But there are no actively, like, reaching actively out to different communities to see if there is a need for those types of programs? Is that correct?
Not at this time. We were initially oversubscribed. And if we're able to use some additional monies from the existing year and this upcoming fiscal year for the housing program in particular, we can, we can consider more targeted outreach.
I have a question. I don't know if you may have the answer. What is the proposed date or guidelines for the rest of the beaches, the whole thing? Can I, can I say?
All of Virginia Beach's beaches are open.
So all of them?
As of, as of this past weekend, yes, ma'am, the 22nd.
I've heard some concerns that some of the other beaches were not open within the city.
No other, no other city has their beaches open. All of Virginia Beach's beaches are open.
So all of Virginia Beach?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Wolf.
So Ron, the, the applications that were incomplete and have all the paperwork, are they going to be sent back to these folks so that they can work on them for maybe the next round?
Yes, ma'am, they're having communication on, on each one, yes.
And is there a, a good dispersment throughout the city for all of these applications? Because we want to make sure, you know, they're not coming from, you know, one or two areas. We want to make sure that they're spread throughout.
I haven't seen a geographic mapping of it, but I've seen a significant variety of businesses, yes, ma'am.
We want to make sure that they're spread throughout.
Right.
Okay, Mr. Palucci.
If I could just follow up on the comments from council members Wilson and Woodens especially about sort of intentional outreach and making sure that businesses have access to the opportunities and that we're being very thoughtful about maintaining equity in the process. I don't mean it as a criticism in any way because I know people are working very hard. But I think one of the challenges that we could potentially face with a program like this is that the more traditional businesses and people who are more closely connected with programs like this would have sort of more access to these opportunities. For example, I was visiting a business that, that I go to a lot that recently reopened and was surprised to learn that they hadn't. surprised to learn that they hadn't, they hadn't received any type of assistance program, and so, you know, from the federal government or the city government, and I was referring her to the city's page and saw that they were no longer accepting applications for the EDIP program. So, I think it'd be great to partner with, and I think that's where Council Member Wooden was going, it'd be great to partner with the Hispanic Chamber of Commerce or Black Brand, Harbor, different types of business advocacy organizations that are, that are very closely connected with underserved constituencies so that we can create more access, and I'd love to help with that if I could be of any service. But as we think about round two, I'd love to see and participate in some of those partnerships that I think would expand access.
Most of the organizations you just mentioned are part of our Economic Development's eBlast, but we'll make sure that we're being purposeful on that.
Okay. Mrs. Henley.
I'm missing so much of what everybody's saying because of these masks, I guess, but anyway, it would be such a simple thing to send out to everybody who has a business license in Virginia Beach, a little synopsis of what's offered, wouldn't it?
Yes, ma'am, absolutely. Frankly, we were oversubscribed within, you know, really 24, 48 hours of the initial kind of goal, and so definitely having additional funding continue all the communication channels. I don't know that we've done business license, I guess that's mailing versus electronic, but we'll certainly look at that.
Okay, Mr. Moss.
Since you are oversubscribed, and this is a point we've talked about before, about the first-come-first-served systems are not equitable systems because of just for the reasons mentioned, access to information, having staff that can do these applications at larger qualifying populations, so are we going to pick the distribution of the limited funds based on a random number generator or a lottery of some sort versus first-come-first-served? So, how are we going to distribute the funds in an oversubscribed environment?
Well, on the business assistance, we'll make sure we provide to you the criteria that the VBDA voted on when they accepted the funds. There was a ranking in there. There's also, should be noted that we, part of the criteria that we established was that you had to have a loss in your business, you had to prove that, and so just because someone applied, they may not be eligible because of that issue there. But they, you know, next week, we can bring you that report on how they did the initial tranche and any adjustments you'd like us to make. Similarly, in the housing assistance, we've been able to get most everybody approved. There was 14 applications, I think, that were above the income limit, and with another round of funding, we can make sure we can get to them as well.
Well, so, knowing this understands where I stand, if the next round isn't based upon a lottery system of some kind, when people need all the other qualifications and are oversubscribed, I'm not willing to give people more money, because I don't think that's the intent we had, and I think people didn't listen very well. And I'm not happy that we have any system that, when it's oversubscribed for everyone meeting the criteria, that some criteria that we didn't see for money that we appropriated was used. I can't speak for everybody else, but that doesn't leave me with a satisfying feeling whatsoever.
Okay, anybody else? Okay, Mr. Williams, you know, the Restaurant Association's been working hard to come up with, you know, criteria for opening and everything. Do we have any copies of what they've been doing through the Restaurant Association that Mr. Moss has concern about making sure that when we do start opening the restaurants that you can share with us at this time, maybe in the Friday pack-up?
Sure, I know there's been several iterations of that, whether that is what the governor will actually do. My understanding and what the thinking is, is that it's a, the basic requirement, other than 90% of it, would be about cleaning and sanitization and the requirement of PPE, and the other part, that's the real part that's been all over the map, would be the distancing. Is it a capacity or is it a percentage of total capacity? And what we continue to hear is that it would actually potentially be the physical distance between patrons of the restaurant, so six feet or more between each individual, not just the tables, but between the individuals.
Okay, yeah, if you have any information that you might be able to at least pass on at this point in terms of education, but the assurances I've been hearing from the restaurant industry is that, you know, they are in the business of sanitation, and they always have been, but they are aware of the, you know, the extra measures that are going to be necessary to even get a limited opening, is that correct?
Right.
Yeah, okay. Okay, anybody else? Okay, thank you.
Steve Cover, Deputy City Manager for Public Safety.
Good afternoon, Mayor, members of council. I'll be, I'll try to be quick as I give you a little quick synopsis overview of this past weekend. I've asked again Chief Sacaro to join me, should you have any particular questions for the law enforcement side of the House. But I will tell you that call volume across all public safety is starting to creep up as people, as people are moving around, moving about, as they're starting to get out of their homes. So, that continues to occur across all lines of public safety throughout the city. This past weekend, the weather was, the best weather was on Saturday, obviously, so that was the busier day of the weekend. I know, Mayor, you were down there with DCM Williams and the Intron Police Chief and the Governor, so the vice mayor was there as well. So, we saw, for example, in Sandbridge, the reports that I got were, there were some ebb and flow of folks throughout the day. There would be larger-sized crowds in particular times of the day, and then they would leave and others would come out. The oceanfront was much the same as it, the oceanfront kind of builds throughout the day with citizens coming to the beach, and then, as the sun sets, the activity shifts over to Atlantic Avenue, and we see, we see an increase in citizens on Atlantic Avenue. Again, this weekend, the police enforced, or did what they call the flush of Atlantic Avenue around 9:00 PM. They took the cars off of Atlantic Avenue because of the congestion. So, that's a, that's a process that the police department uses when they see the congestion get to a point that we can't safely get public safety vehicles in and out of the oceanfront area, so they will, they will call that evacuation of cars off Atlantic Avenue, if you will. I am, I'm very pleased with the work that our police department has done in the training process for the I-AM-going contractors, the ambassadors at the oceanfront. They have really put in a lot of effort, so a lot of kudos to Chief Sacaro's officers for that training and that opportunity to help those people understand their roles as they interact with our citizens. So, that's a, that's a process that's ongoing, we're learning. We learned a little bit this weekend, and we're going to continue to improve that program as time goes on. For the most part, I think both the ambassadors and the police department got what we were looking for, and that's voluntary compliance for people that were, that were out there doing some things that maybe they shouldn't have been doing, and for the most part, people voluntarily complied. As DCM Williams talked about, there's some legalities that we feel we've got to work through so that the police will have a little more capacity for enforcement, if you will. So, all in all, a good weekend. I think, I think the number of citations are starting to go up, the routine traffic citations, et cetera, but for the most part, it was, it was a fairly routine start of summer weekend. So, I'll stand by for your questions, and I'll ask Chief Sacaro if you have anything to add.
Any questions? Mrs. Henley.
Are the ambassadors going to be out there every day throughout the summer, or?
Yes, ma'am, that's my, that's my understanding, every day.
I'm assuming this is one of those costs that the CARES Act would help pay for, right? But anyway, they're going to be there all, every day?
Yes, ma'am, and I'll, I'm not the expert on the funding, I would defer to DCM Williams on that, but that money's coming from various places to be able to pay those personnel.
Mr. Bradley, could you give a clarification?
My understanding is that would qualify.
Okay, any other questions? Oh, once again, you know, okay, I'm sorry, Ms. Wilson.
So, were there any summons at all given to anybody this weekend for not following the rules?
No, good afternoon, Mr. Mayor and members of council. No, ma'am, we, as Mr. Cover indicated, we are returning to our normal enforcement strategy and stance, but we did not have to make any enforcement action on any of the executive orders that we have the ability to take enforcement action under.
Were any stores, anything has to close that opened and that haven't been opened?
We did not have any concerns with that. There were some concerns with some of the people on Atlantic Avenue as the night progressed to move towards Atlantic Avenue and use some of the open café seating, even though they weren't patrons of the businesses, so our officers engaged with the restaurant manager, management as best possible to have those conversations. But we met a large majority of folks in compliance, we did have large crowds, and we did initiate that traffic flush to relieve that congestion in the core area on Atlantic Avenue.
So, the large crowds on Atlantic Avenue, are we having an issue with social distancing with them?
Well, there is some, some issues with the large crowds gathering, but as we saw on the beach and the boardwalk, they're traversing each other, so they're in the open air, and they're passing each other as best possible.
Okay, anyone else? Once again, thank you for remarkable work over the weekend, and it really helped make our grand opening a, I think, a very, very good success that was even recognized by the governor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and I do have to compliment the women and men of the police department. They worked extraordinarily hard, particularly Saturday with the weather. They worked in concert with the beach ambassadors program. We've identified some things to improve. We had a conference call this afternoon with the IMG leadership team and internal staff team that will work through it, but as both Mr. Williams and Mr. Cover said, there's some, some legal issues that the council needs to review in view of the governor's executive orders.
Okay, thank you, and thank you all for the hard work. Mr. Williams, DCM Cover also, there was a lot of hard work, even our legal team, there was a lot of thought and went into this, and a lot of hard work, and it paid off, and I thought to be very successful, and kudos to all of you, okay? Okay, at this point, we're going to flip item B and C, we're going to talk about pending planning items, and then we'll use our short-term rental update lead into our council discussion on short-term rentals. Welcome, Mr. Tahar.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. I'll be going through the pending planning items for June 2nd and June 9th. If we can have on the screen, on June 2nd, we have nine planning items that will be coming forward to the city council. These are previously scheduled for March and are being carried forward to this date on June 2nd. We've done our best to split the applications with your regular meetings containing the items that are regular planning items, while the in-between meetings that you normally have for your sessions will be for your short-term rental applications. Item number one is for Codeu LLC and Ocean Properties LLC at 1159 1165 Lynnhaven Parkway in the Rose Hall District. It is for a conditional use permit to expand, or modification of a conditional use permit to expand an existing automobile repair, automobile sales establishment. There's currently a site that was approved previously for a automobile sales. They're looking to purchase the property next door and expand their operations to the property next door. This was on the consent agenda for the Planning Commission. Item number two is by Justin Miley, 3253 Hungarian Road in the Prince of Stan District. It's a conditional use permit for a residential kennel. The applicant was out, well, the zoning ordinance requires a conditional use permit for any residential property that plans on having more than four dogs. The proposal was to have four companion house dogs and six hunting dogs. At the Planning Commission public hearing, there was a neighbor that is, that was in opposition. The applicant had previously said eight hunting dogs. The commission had asked the applicant if the, the actual number of dogs that he has, that he would be keeping, would be six, and the applicant accepted, at the Planning Commission's request, a reduction to 10 dogs in total. The area where the animals are held is fenced-in kennel area, which meets the distance requirements away from the property line for residential kennels. And any questions on the second?
Any questions? Okay.
Item number three is in the Centerville District at 1916 Kinsel Crossing Lane. It was a request for a home-based wildlife rehabilitation facility by Suzanne Nicole Rupp. Ms. Rupp is requesting withdrawal of her application. She is, she has moved from the property, so she's requesting withdrawal.
Yeah, Ms. Ward.
Not on this one specifically, but there was discussion before, and I don't know if it was before you came on, Bobby, where we talked about having animal control, investigate each one of these home-based wildlife. Are y'all doing that now?
Yes, sir, yes. Each of these applications, we do ask for animal control for any previous or current existing violations for anything that deals with animals, so we do have those in the reports. Items number four and five are by the Judeo-Christian Outreach Center in the Beach District at 1053 Virginia Beach Boulevard. I briefed you on this in March. This is for a conditional use permit for a single-room occupancy facility and a modification of conditions to the existing conditional use permit for a group home. Staff does recommend approval, and Planning Commission recommended, and a 9 to 0 vote for approval as well. Here's the proposed elevations and conceptual layout plan. The development will be done in two phases in order to continue operations of the Judeo-Christian Outreach Center. The architectural design is shown on the left, and they will be utilizing previous pavers in their parking area as well. Any questions on that item? Item number six is by the City of Virginia Beach to incorporate the, into the comprehensive plan, the Virginia Resort Area Strategic Action Plan 2030. We did hold a pub, yes, sir, Mr. Moss.
Can we just get a copy of that, our Friday pack, of the actual proposal?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
You have been briefed on this, we did hold a public hearing previously. Item number seven is by the Sharp Family Real Estate LLC at the northeast corner of Gatewood Avenue and Parrish Street in the Beach District for a subdivision variance to the regulations of the subdivision ordinance, which requires a corner radius when properties are subdivided. Staff recommended denial, and Planning Commission recommended approval on a 9 to 0 vote.
Was there opposition at that?
There was opposition at the Planning Commission hearing, as well as in writing.
Can we get a copy of the document, please?
Yes, sir, thank you. So, just to explain the existing property, the property is 15,000 square feet, and the applicant is proposing to subdivide it into three lots, one with a single-family home and two lots with a semi-detached, semi-detaching, it's for a total of three. Currently now, it is zone R5D, which would allow for the construction of a duplex on 10,000 square feet, but the applicant is proposing to construct a single-family home. The subdivision ordinance requires that a corner radius be required when subdivisions are proposed, which would be typically a 10-foot radius, which would then drop the proposed lot 90A below the requirement of 5,000 square feet. The applicant is requesting a variance to not require that corner radius. Any questions on that item? Item number eight is by Franklin Johnson Group Management and Development LLC at 4545 South Boulevard in the Rose Hall District. This is for a conditional rezoning from I-1 to conditional 836 to construct an apartment complex. Staff recommends approval, and the Planning Commission also also recommended approval.
Was there opposition to this rezoning?
There was one, uh, person that came in opposition, uh, during the public hearing.
Can we just get a copy of their remarks, please?
Yes, sir. I believe they also, uh, wrote a letter as well, and we'll provide that. Thank you. The proposal is, uh, to construct, uh, five, uh, five-story multifamily buildings with clubhouse and swimming pool amenities and up to 160 multifamily units. Uh, the applicant is seeking a deviation for the, from the 30-foot front yard setback to permit a 10-foot front yard setback from South Boulevard, which would align with, uh, typical planning principles for lining the street in this area. Uh, though not in the, in the strategic growth area, this does provide for a better layout and internal parking, which is, which is shielded from the right-of-way. Yes, Mr. Blue?
Thank you. This currently a storage facility. Could you describe for the people who are watching anyway and for myself, what are some of the, um, uses for that, uh, property that could be, um, that could be used there now by right?
So the property is zone I-1, which is our, which is one of the general industrial zoning classifications. There is currently a moving company, uh, that can store their large vans and, uh, semis at the property, along with other typical industrial, uh, light industrial uses that we have throughout the city. It is a bit out of place between the office building, the religious institution across the street, and adjacent to it, um, a, uh, existing apartment complex, but there are some significant industrial uses that could be placed there. Um, some of the, some of the, not the heavy and intense ones, but manufacture, light manufacturing, other things similar to that could be in the site.
Thank you. Anybody else? Okay, Mr. Jones, then, Ms. App.
Were there, were there any speakers virtually or anything at the planning commission?
There, there was, uh, this, these, these items were heard, uh, when the planning commission was still meeting in person. Um, the, there was one, I believe, one speaker that came in opposition. Uh, actually, I take that back.
In opposition?
There was a speaker in opposition, uh, that owned the property adjacent as well. I think there was a, someone else in the neighborhood.
And, Ms. App?
Can you tell me, um, what the capacity of Southern Boulevard is? Is that, I'm assuming it's probably under capacity.
Uh, based on Rick Lohman, the city's traffic engineer's, uh, information that he provided during the, uh, planning commission public hearing, it is under capacity.
Okay.
Uh, and the, the addition of the apartment units will not, uh, bring it below its, its capacity levels.
And is that true up at the, the closest intersection on Baxter and Independence?
Yes, that is correct.
Okay, so we don't have a, we're not concerned about a congestion coming out of that, into that major intersection?
No, ma'am. It's, it's currently, um, under capacity, well, well under capacity and no concern of adding these additional units.
And then additionally, can you tell me where they drain into? Are they draining into, into, into the, the failure or are they draining the opposite direction?
I do not have that information. I'm sorry, I'll have to-
I'm sure it'll be in our packet. Appreciate it.
Yeah. Good, Mr. Malice?
Just have an observation for my, my peers. If you, I know this thing about having apartments or townhouses within 10 feet of a roadway is a social engineer's dream, but if you drive down Wesleyan Drive and see where those patios are right next to the sidewalk and the roadway, four-lane highway or Shore Drive, and the noise that's generated as air is displaced by vehicles, I, I, you know, just don't know that that's really the standard that we want to continue or allow because it certainly does not leave, well, maybe it does, but for me, it doesn't look like something that if you had a choice, you would do. And I don't know that we should, and other people might be able to do it by right, but certainly where that's not by right, I think we should set a higher standard for ourselves than that. But go by and take your look and drive down Shore Drive and go down Wesleyan Drive and see if that's, if you were a family, you'd want to rent that first-floor apartment, uh, you know, three feet from a sidewalk and 10 feet from a highway. It's an interesting perspective, but until you see it, it's hard to judge.
Hey, anybody else at this point? Yeah, Mr. Tower?
Are, are you, are you done with, uh, June 2nd?
No, sir.
I was gonna let you finish that, then I had a comment.
Okay.
All right. I'll have the presentation back on the screen. Thank you. Item number nine is by Martin and Jean Farnut. It is at 1413 Mill Landing Road at the Prince of San, in the Prince of San District. This is also for a subdivision variance, uh, to section 4.4B of the subdivision regulations. Staff does recommend approval and the planning commission voted eight to zero to recommend approval. Uh, the subdivision variant, the subdivision variance is to correct a recordation of a plat in 1974, uh, not a plat, I'm sorry, a recordation of a deed, uh, to separate, uh, lots. Uh, at that point in time, the state law required that you, uh, in order to divide lots, you had to do it by plat, and so it's commonly known as what's called an illegal subdivision, but the house exists, the property has been sold. It was found through the title search that the, the subdivision happened at the wrong, the wrong way at the wrong time. And so the applicant is looking to, uh, recognize what's already existing on the property, which is the single-family home. Uh, in order to do that, they do need a subdivision variance, uh, to, to get approval. It is located in the AE flood zone, which is another portion of the subdivision variance. Um, the, again, the house is existing. There, there is no additions proposed to the house at this time, and if anything were to, if they proposed to do any additions or any changes to the house, uh, that didn't meet the flood plan ordinance regulations, it would have to come into compliance. And that is, uh, everything for the June 2nd agenda.
Okay, did you want to say something, Mr. Tower?
I did. Uh, Mr. Tahan, as you know, I've got, and I've passed out to each of you. You may recall that when this item came up for, I, uh, suggested a, a revision to, uh, pages 41 and 42 of the RESEAP plan. This is item six from the June 2nd. It's just a single page referred to there. And I would, I would continue to, uh, plan to introduce this, and I've, I've distributed it to you guys, and is it possible to get this on the website with the, with the other information that's up there so people-
Yes, sir.
-can see that as well? Just wanted to give people, I have, um, not received any, uh, you know, that was right before the, the roof fell in on us, um, and I have not received any further, uh, communications that I can recall since that time. There were concerns to, uh, about this not being brought up during the course of the, of the RESEAP group, and I just think it was not really an attempt to change the report as much as to just to shift the emphasis on, to make it clear, that we really needed more talk about Rudy Loop. Um, I, and I continue to believe that's true. But in any event, it's here, uh, for you to look at between now and next week. If you've got any questions about it, you can call me. I tend to solicit other people's input on the committee where they haven't met since that time for obvious reasons, so it's, I've not been able to reconvene the committee per se, but I have not received any significant number of objections that I've received. A number of people have told me they think it's fine.
Anybody else? Yeah, Mr. Moss?
I would just like to see a track changes version of, and I know often you do that with the line numbers to show what did it say now, what will it will say, and there were some speakers the night that this was adopted, and, uh, I would like to make sure that those organization people that spoke at least were notified of a proposed change, because one of the things people talk about is, when something might be not to us perceived material, but to the public is, "I didn't have any idea it was happening," and this is today and Tuesday's only seven days away. We just need to make sure that when we talk about outreach, do people really, the surfers had a big issue with this? You know, these are, they were, these are groups that came, and I'm sure all of us got emails from those group afterwards. I just don't want someone to think, and I know Mr. Tower doesn't either-
I have no problem with that.
-that they didn't adequately, have adequate notice, and they have a chance to judge for themselves whether track changes are material or not.
Okay, well-stated. Okay.
Okay.
Okay, moving on?
Moving on, yes, sir. Uh, for June 9th, we have, uh, 20, uh, short-term rental applications that we'll be going over, and it will have a pretty significant discussion on short-term rentals after this, so I'll go through these very quickly. Nineteen of the applications are recommended for approval by staff in the planning commission and were on the consent agenda at the time that they went to the planning commission. One item was recommended for denial by staff in the planning commission due to insufficient parking, and the applicant has, uh, attempted to address those parking issues, and I'll explain that as I go through. Item number one is at 417 16th Street by Donald Robertson in the Beach District. They are requesting for a four-bedroom short-term rental. Uh, the structure is built in 1927 and all four parking spaces are located on the property. Item number two is by Martin Plastin at 1738 Baltic Avenue in the Beach District. He owns, uh, one of the condominium units, unit 1738, which is a two-bedroom unit, um, and he does have two onsite parking spaces to meet the parking requirement. Item number three is again by Martin Plastin at 338 25th and a half Street for a conditional use permit at, uh, another condominium. It is a two-bedroom short-term rental with, uh, two parking spaces located onsite. One is in the garage and one is located on the property in front of the garage. Item numbers four through seven are by Hangar Holdings LLC at 207 12th Street, units 1, 2, 3, and 4. The property, uh, has four units in, uh, on it, and each of the units are three bedrooms. Uh, all 12 of the parking spaces are meant onsite. And it is in the OR, Oceanfront Resort, uh, Form Base Code District.
I, I have a question.
To Mr. Jones?
Uh, that restaurant that was on the corner has been torn down. Uh, Mr. Tahan, do you know what the plan is for that?
I do not, off the top of my head at this moment, sir, but I can look into that.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. Okay. Item number eight is by Mary Ann Cox in the Beach District, 905 Pacific Avenue, Unit D. It is a two-bedroom apartment dwelling unit in the OR zoning district. They are requesting a short-term rental, uh, in the two-bedroom unit. They do have, uh, two parking spaces that they've obtained. One is, is solely theirs on the site, and they have also, uh, leased or requested, or in the process of obtaining a lease at the 9th Street parking garage. Item number nine is by Steve Goram, uh, 325 25th Street. This one is at another location that you just saw recently. Uh, they have, um, two bedrooms. The property's zone 824, which is an apartment district in the Old Beach overlay. Uh, they do have, uh, a two-bedroom townhome style condominium unit. They do have two off-street parking spaces, both of which are on the property, one in the garage and one in front of the garage. Item number 10 is by Richard Fleming, uh, at not, 2937 Arctic Avenue. It's a townhouse, uh, unit at the corner of Arctic Avenue and a 20-foot lane, uh, and they have three bedrooms. They do have three off-street parking spaces, uh, one in the garage that they could technically do two and two in the driveway in front of the garage. Item number 11 is by Justice Swango at 521 Carolina Avenue. This property is zone R5S, and it's a four-bedroom, single-family dwelling, and it has, uh, the four on, off-street parking spaces are provided onsite.
Hey, Mr. Wood?
This one's the one that had the code violation, though. Has that been corrected?
Yes, sir, it has been corrected.
That image doesn't seem to-
That, that image is, uh, yes, sir, I'm sorry. Did we were, I had forgotten to update the image. We did, we did contact the property owner. They're sure that they corrected the violation, uh, through building permits and through zoning.
Does that place meet the, it seems like there's a lot of pavement. It must be a huge backyard not to exceed the minimum, you know, you only can cover so much of the, uh, pervious surface within pervious area. How many can check that against the code?
The, the area that they're located in, Kevin, do you want? Yes. So the area that they're located, the zoning classification they're located in does not have a maximum pervious area. Um, but-
That's something we should take a look at. Falling is a concern. Thank you.
Item number 12 is at 209 South Birdneck Road by Kevin Bryan in the Beach District. This is a, uh, five-bedroom home that is requesting a conditional use permit for a short-term rental. They do have five parking spaces located on their site with one space located inside the garage. Number 13 is, uh, by Joshua J. Code, trustee, at 407 18th Street in Unit D. Uh, staff and planning commission do recommend approval. There are four units located on this property. Uh, theirs is the, uh, north, uh, northeast unit on the property. There are three other units located on the property with, uh, and as a condominium, uh, with separate property owners of each. Uh, where the property owner at, to this unit in Unit D has control over. They do have locations for their four parking spaces for their four-bedroom unit, uh, two in the garage and two in the driveway where they have control over per the condominium documents.
Mr. Wood?
Yeah, I know we're gonna get into the, to the details on this, but, you know, there's no way that parking situation works. I mean, you know, first off, I don't know if anybody can, driving anything other than a smart car can make the, the 90-degree turn into those, those garages, but then the other ones just kind of block it all in. That just doesn't make sense to me, but-
Sir, I understand.
That's just kind of the whole issue I have with using this garage parking, but, okay.
Yes, sir.
You have digit, in our GIS system, this lot and parcel is digitized, correct?
Yes, sir.
Can you provide us a digitized format of this so that we could do our own examination of, uh, of what's really possible in terms of, unless you're gonna pick up the car with people and move it, uh, how that works? We could see that in a digitized, uh, format.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
I have a question.
Ms. App?
What is our process for verifying that the garage is in fact available for parking? I know we've had this discussion before, but I, I know I've personally stayed in Airbnbs where they say the garage is off-limits. I mean, I don't know what the city's code is in terms of that, but I know that a lot of the, a lot of the Airbnbs say, or the short-term rentals say, "Okay, this is what we use for storage. We really don't want you in here anyway," so I, do we have a-
So we require, uh, Councilmember Rabbit, the applicant to either provide us a photo or allow us to inspect the site to ensure that it's open. Uh, since the last question that the city council had, uh, regarding the garage parking previously two months ago, we've added that into the reports.
But there's no way for us to actually know if that's what's being practiced?
Uh, other than, well, we're still, still relatively new in the, in the enforcement process for this after, uh, what's been going on, so we haven't gotten that specific complaint, but we-
Gotcha.
We do, if we do see there is overflow parking, we will, we will tell a applicant or a person that has a conditional use permit to show us that that area is available for those people to park.
Great. Thank you.
Okay. Items 14, 15, and 16 are by Christopher Tang at 417 20th Street and 421 20th Street, Units A1 and B2. These are, uh, technically two separate properties with three units on them. The property owner, uh, the, the applicant owns, uh, all, all the units and both properties. Um, Unit 417, um, is a four-bedroom unit. I'm sorry, I believe these numbers got flipped around, so I apologize. Oh, I'm looking at it differently than when I reviewed it earlier, so that's on me. There are, uh, it's a conditional use permit and they are providing their parking. They will be proposing parking in the back for six parking spaces through the alley, which is required through the OR zoning, uh, classification. Uh, they, we did require them to, uh, put the, install the new parking in the rear because the parking in the front is not permitted to be added, uh, per the OR district without getting alternative compliance. Uh, the applicant did propose to show these two, the six parking spaces for the six bedrooms that are proposed in the three units, and, uh, they will have to install the parking to meet the criteria. Uh, there also is a condition that, uh, states that there will be a requirement that if any of the units are sold, that parking will be, uh, provided, um, for the other units to meet the criteria, or they'll have to meet the criteria for their parking onsite, um, in order for the conditional use permit to continue to be valid.
Yeah, John?
Will that condition be such on the applicant that they would, that would be recorded? Does someone do title search in the court records? That would show up in the records that a title firm would see?
So I believe this question did come up when we talked about- So, I believe this question did come up when we talked about it the first time. I don't believe the current way that we have the condition labeled has it that way, but we will...
All right. Appreciate the look-up. Thank you.
Yes, sir. Number 17 is by Jackie Oss at 301 Winston-Salem Avenue. This is in the R5S zoning, residential zoning district. It's a four-bedroom, single-family dwelling, and they have four... There are four off-street parking spaces located on the property, one in the garage, though not required to be in the garage, and three in their driveway. They do have enough room on their driveway to handle additional vehicles. Number 18 is by Susan Markley at 629 14th Street. This is the application where staff recommend the denial and the Planning Commission, 820, also recommend denial. The property is a two-bedroom, or the property owner is requesting a conditional use permit for a two-bedroom, short-term rental. The site only has one parking space located on their property, and at the time of the application, the second parking space was located hanging off the property in their driveway. However, it's blocking the sidewalk. Because it was blocking the public access on the sidewalk, staff did recommend approval. Subsequent to the applicant getting the denial recommendation from the staff and Planning Commission, they did go and request to obtain a... Or they did obtain a lease for one parking space in the 9th Street garage, which is close to half a mile away from the location. Number 19 is by Elizabeth Ann Gregory at 635 South Atlantic Avenue. This is Zone R10 in the Croatan neighborhood. It's a four-bedroom, single-family dwelling. They are request... They do have four off-street parking spaces located on the property. Technically, they have room for five. All their parking is located on their property. And number 20 is Shiplap Cottage, the Cove LLC in the Lynn Haven District at 201 87th Street, Unit A. It is a one unit in... I'm sorry, there's one... It says one unit. There's one bedroom. I'm sorry, I apologize. There's the... Unit A is requesting a short-term rental conditional use permit. It is a one-bedroom unit, and they do have the one off-street parking space that is required, which is located off of Atlantic Avenue. Or is it Arctic? Atlantic.
Yes, Mr. Jones.
Was there opposition to that?
To this? We don't... I don't remember that. No, we do not have opposition to this application. We had none written.
Does the owner of the property own both units?
I do not believe they do.
Do we know... I mean, I presume that adjoining unit has been notified of that.
Correct. It is... If it is on one property... I'm sorry. Yes, we require that the other units sign the disclosure statement to know that they were... That they are aware of the property.
I'd be interested in knowing if that is occupied by the owner on the other side or a tenant.
Okay. That is it for the glimpse for the June 9th, or June 2nd to June 9th.
Any other questions for Mr. Tahan? Well, I guess you guys should stay up here, Bobby. All righty.
I'm sorry. While Howard is pulling up the application, I am thankful for Howard's assistance in keeping us going here. Counsel, as you remember, during the February retreat, staff was given direction, as well as the City Attorney's Office, to review some proposed changes. In one of your Friday packets through Mr. Leahy, we had sent a summary of what we believe to be the items that were in question that were brought up during the retreat. This report, or this presentation is to provide you with an update of where we are as far as trying to meet those, the requests from City Council from the retreat. It's also to obtain direction on approach and any proposed amendments that we have going forward. Obtain direction on transition guidelines as far as applications that are currently in awaiting processing, as well as any items that have gone to Planning Commission and may be impacted on any changes that we make if there are no transition guidelines in place. And then also provide a potential timeline based on the different approaches that we have available to us. So, it'd be easier to start with the summary of proposed amendments and actions that we have through the enforcement side of this. The three things that we took away was to authorize the assessment of civil penalties for noncompliance, provide for termination of grandfathered status for inactive short-term rentals, and to obtain a list of the properties offered as short-term rentals through a third-party that we were trying to obtain utilizing some information that we had with an existing contract with the Commissioner of Revenue. First is dealing with civil penalties. The proposal is to change the process to, instead of a zoning violation for 30 days, to a civil penalty of $200 for the first offense and $500 for subsequent offenses. At this time, typically what we would do is after around three or after three offenses, we would typically issue a summons to court for an applicant. It is potential for us to continue to fine or to seek an injunction requiring compliance from the courts. This does allow us... So, typically, the process would be, it's a process we use for signs and a few other zoning violations at one point in time where they have the option of either showing up in court or paying the fine beforehand. So, it's not a classic ticket per se, if that makes sense.
Do you want me to wait, or do you want me to...
Yeah, if you can finish the break, we're going to have the discussion on it right
The second portion of that is to limit the grandfathered and short-term rentals. During the creation of the previous ordinance, or the current ordinance that's in place, there was a term that was utilized for STRs that did not require to have a conditional use permit if they met the registration timeline and all the other zoning requirements. That is that term called grandfathered. In context, grandfathering per the short-term rental ordinance is functionally similar to what's called a legal non-conforming use. We have typically been telling people that if you do not utilize a short-term rental for more, for two years or more, that the status of continuing to operate it would go away, which is similar to legal non-conformities. So, we are looking to add language that the grandfathered status would be revoked by the Planning Director. And again, the timeline aligns with the requirements of other legal non-conformities, which would be two years. So, for consistency, we wanted to make sure we add that language in. And last in the enforcement portion is obtain a list of short-term rentals operating through a third-party vendor. After much review and discussion with Mr. Stiles' staff and Mr. Stiles, as we looked through how information was shared with the third-party vendor, a conclusion was reached that we could not obtain directly the same information from the third-party vendor that the Commissioner of Revenue is obtaining now. With that, we met with Host Compliance, which is the name of the vendor, and they provided us a cost for obtaining their services. It would give us the ability to have the addresses that they identify, short-term rentals that are being listed in the city. They also gave us the option in their fee summary to do the initial contact on behalf of the city by sending an official letter from the city once they realized that it is not on any of our lists of either approved conditional use permits or the grandfathered list that was already approved. And then having that portion with the sending of the letters to people, that would help to streamline the enforcement process for city staff and wouldn't limit the need for additional staff if we're able to obtain those services. And Planning is looking at yearly funding to be identified to accomplish this. As far as the summary of proposed amendments related to the short-term rental use itself, direction we had received from the Council during the retreat was to limit short-term rentals to protect neighborhoods, differentiate between locations and other criteria where properties are candidates for conditional use permits, and to limit location of STRs starting with an overlay approach. So, this kind of is iterative, so I'm going to start from the beginning, and it'll kind of build on itself as we talk through it. So, I know it sounds counterintuitive to say this, but to limit STRs to protect neighborhoods, one approach could be to allow short-term rentals by right if it meets certain criteria. That criteria would mean that it meets all the zoning requirements that are currently in the ordinance, but it is also declared and used as the principal residence of the property owner. There are many discussions with Council discussing potentially creating a commercial venture out of this and impacting neighborhoods adversely. Of course, as we know, people that own the property and live in the property a majority of the time wouldn't have a little bit closer of an eye than someone that just is operating these as a commercial venture. And so, we believe that you create a subset, which is different than the home... Home sharing. I'm sorry, I was going to call it home staying. Home sharing, which is the person living in the house during the rental, and they rent the rooms. This would be the allowing by right would be that they would consider this their principal residence, and they would live there more than half the year, and they then can leave and rent it out. They would still have to register with the city to provide that information, but it gives and provides a clear path saying, this is what we believe is something sustainable that we know that can, won't impact neighborhoods as adversely. Conversely, what that allows us to do, it allows us to then be, have more poignant and strict criteria on conditional use permits that don't meet any of the criteria. So, when someone comes to apply for a conditional use permit for a short-term rental, we would add in the conditional use permit section for short-term rentals findings language that they would have to meet. Findings that could be added as a factor could include that locating the STR does not concentrate the number of short-term rental uses, which will alter the character of the existing residential neighborhood, the approval of the short-term rentals compatible with the surrounding land uses, the proposed parking is sufficient, and the short-term rental is located in an area in close proximity to venues, business districts, or other areas where they can support visitors by providing housing accommodations. So, these would be things that the applicant would have to show that they meet this criteria to prove to Council that it would be appropriate to have a short-term rental in the location. And then lastly, it would be to limit locations by utilizing the overlay district approach. Overlay districts and certain zoning districts are specifically identified to promote and preserve the character of the area or residential neighborhood. So, the process of creating an overlay district means that there was something identified that stands out differently for certain areas. And so, similar to the Old Beach Overlay District, the North End Overlay District, Shore Drive, and the R5S Residential Single Family District, there are very specific things in the zoning ordinance that are addressed to protect the character of the neighborhood in each of these districts. Utilizing the overlay approach and providing options in these areas would be appropriate because it does have the opportunity to say, we are... We've already identified what we're trying to protect in these neighborhoods through the zoning process. It's laid out in the zoning ordinance. We are now providing higher standards or different requirements for uses because we're trying to protect those things in those neighborhoods. Now, there are some alternatives to this. It would be to only allow the by-right option in these districts, so these are areas that need to be, are potentially, need to be protected, and they can only operate a short-term rental if they own the property and it is their primary residence or their principal residence. Or we could allow the STRs to be by-right or by conditional use permit only in these districts. And so, this is some of the direction that staff does need from Council so that we can continue to move forward with some of these changes. To provide some information for this, and I got this information after I had to submit the PowerPoint, so I do apologize. There are a total of 179 conditional use permit applications at the moment. In the Old Beach Overlay, there are 32 applications. North End Overlay District, there's 14. Shore Drive, there's 16. R5S, there's four. And as a side note, in the OR District, which is our Oceanfront Resort District, there are 56 applications. Out of those five districts that I named, that's where 70%, 68% of the applications for short-term rentals are located at this time, with a high number in the Old Beach Overlay District at this point, with 32. Other than the OR, which is a much larger area, there are 32 in the Old Beach Overlay Just so the zoning overlays in these areas, we're locating where the Old Beach and the North End Overlay. I know that we are familiar with these areas, we're just showing it on a map, as well as the Shore Drive Overlay, which is bifurcated by the Wesner Bridge, and could be argued that there are significant differences on the east and west side of the bridge, if necessary, because of the different land use patterns that are existing. And also the R5S Château-Lan District, which is a district that has in place to protect the residential neighborhood that, and if you have lots that previously exist, you have to have 50 feet in order to build a single-family home. Just because you have lots doesn't mean you can build on each lot. So, each of these districts have regulations that are identified to help protect the districts, and so that's why these were the first ones identified to move forward. Moving forward to the transition rules discussion, the current load of the short-term rental applications, we have 58 STRs awaiting recommendation from the Planning Commission, I'm sorry, with recommendations from the Planning Commission, which Council is taking on, and 62 applications that would be heard by the Planning Commission in May and June. I know that does not add up to 179. We do have other applications in the hopper that are in and out of the process as they get more documentation into us. So, the question is, as far as these applications, if we do choose to move forward with changes in regulations, do we allow them to move forward under the rules that they applied under, or do they have to meet wherever they are in the process? If they have not been approved by Council, do they have to meet whatever rules are in place at the time that Council considers it? Typically, when there are regulation changes, we have had this transition allowed for if you have the application in the pipeline by a certain date, you're allowed to continue to move forward. That is just a courtesy. That is not technically something that we are required to do. As far as potential timeline, in June, the Council can adopt a resolution referring to the Planning Commission to review proposed amendments. And again, depending on this approach, we could take overlays that are prepared to move forward, or we can do it all at once. There may be some overlays where additional public outreach is required or public comments, while there are others that feel like they're prepared to move forward as quickly as possible. It is a planning process, so June, July, we would like to try to at least obtain public comment or public outreach. I know we've heard many of these short-term rentals and heard from the public at each council meeting when we hear them, but we do want to make sure we do provide the opportunity for input on these new changes, with the potential for August Planning Commission public hearing, and then in August or September, City Council public hearing on the proposed changes. Again, depending on how quickly City Council would like us to move, this is the quickest we could move. Of course, depending on the timeline and what Council would like staff to do as we do our outreach, it can be lengthened out. I did want to show, and I skipped over this because it wasn't on my notes. Howard, can you go? I do have one of my staff members put together a GIS map, Nicole Gerita, one of our planning technicians. She took the 311 list, as it's called, clinically called, the list that we have of grandfathered properties, and she mapped them, and you can search by address where these are located, as well as it shows in the different colors on the parcels, properties that have short-term rental applications. So, I know Council had requested us to come up with a way to visually see it and to look at it. We are working on this, getting this data clean and helping us move forward, which, as we get the Host Compliance contract online, we could also populate that data in here as well so that the public knows that information. Okay. Thank you, Howard. Can you put... Thank you.
Are we open for discussion, Bobby?
Yes, sir.
Okay, Ms. Abbott.
Thanks, Bobby, for your never-ending work on this. I appreciate it. I want to... I have many questions, but I want to start with Slide 1. I, of course, was advocated strongly for us to change how we were penalizing noncompliance. I have a couple of questions, and these might be better suited for Mark, but do we have to go in 30-day increments, or is that... to go in 30-day increments, or is that just a number we picked because it's a month?
So, as far as zoning compliance, the weight's currently written. It does require a 30-day notice of violation.
So, we could, we could not do it sooner?
However, there are provisions for uses that change enough over time where it can be shortened to 10 days.
Okay. I, I mean, I would, I would prefer to see a number like 15 for failure of noncompliance. I think, I think that this would work most effectively if we could show the members of the public that are being impacted by the noncompliance issue that we have a swift way to, you know, seek compliance. I think that, I think that'll yield a better result. In addition to that, the step up from, I think it was $200 to $500, is there, do we have restrictions on how we grade that? Can we go, okay, it's $200, and then if you fail to comply, it's $500, if you fail to comply, it's $1,000? Or, again, I think that the stricter this is and the harder it hits for failure to comply, I think that, again, that'll, that shows better representation to the public that, you know, we want to be open to these, but if you can't get it together, then, you know, you're going to have a real impact.
Right. So, the enabling legislation that we have to regulate short-term rentals is through zoning. That's what the Code of Virginia says as far as allowances for us to regulate it. With that comes with those restrictions. And so, with zoning violations, these are the numbers that are called out in state code that we're allowed to levy for any zoning violation of that nature.
Okay. And then, is that ticket issued as soon as the complaint is substantiated, or is it, you know, is there, do we have to witness the violation? Or, I guess it depends on the complaint, but can you elaborate on that?
So, we need to work out the details, but as far as being able to write, essentially, it would be a written summons that would allow for the applicant, or for the property owner to pay the fine instead of going to court.
Mm-hmm.
Similar to a parking ticket, or not parking ticket, similar to a speeding ticket. We would have to substantiate that we do see that there is a short-term rental on site. We do have inspectors that are good at finding evidence that shows that, which will also be supplemented by the fact we get the additional information from the third party that says they are listing, and then, as well as us finding a noncompliance, we can group that together and then write the summons accordingly.
Well, that leads perfectly. So, as far as the third-party vendor is concerned, are they going to be able to notify us immediately as soon as somebody comes online with a short-term rental on one of the various platforms? Or is that something we get every couple of weeks? Or how, I assume they'll be notifying us when they see a listing that is not matching up with like a tax?
Correct. So, I currently have a question to them, asking when, how quickly they can turn around the information.
Okay.
The key is, in order for this to be, as they have done and shown to be able to do, that this can be admissible and utilized in court, is they have a very tight audit period where they look and verify and check everything they can to make sure that it is this property address.
That was going to be my next question, is the evidence that they provide us significant enough to issue a ticket or a summons?
I believe, we wouldn't want to just rely on that by itself. We would use that for first layer of compliance, and then after that, we would want to couple that together with either 911 or 311 phone calls that we receive with complaints and put that information together to issue it.
Gotcha.
The key is, if they do question it, it will go to court, and a judge will have to adjudicate it and review it. So, we want to make sure we have all of our information together accordingly.
Okay. And then, my next question, as far as the thought of saying that, as long as a person is primarily occupying the residence, but maybe rents it when they go on vacation or they have a second home somewhere else, whatever the circumstances, how are we verifying that that is their primary occupancy, that's their primary home?
We haven't gone that far, as far as trying to make sure that we assure that there will be probably some type of affidavit, as well as other information they can provide on taxes. We do have to state what our primary residence is, there may be some other way that they would have to provide that information, but we need to go down that path.
Well, as far as providing feedback, I think it's a, I think it's a really interesting avenue to explore, and I'm very open to it. I really hope that we adopt a policy to going to a fine system for trying to get compliance. I think that's going to have the biggest bang, so to speak, in terms of making sure people are operating these in compliance and allowing us to have the most flexibility across the city. So, and I don't know what the cost of the third-party vendor is yet, but I'm very supportive of that. Thank you.
Okay, Mrs. Henley, and then Ms. Wilson.
Well, we've been at this for five years in June. One of the things that I remember talking to the very beginning aspects of this was that anything that we adopt, we have to be able to enforce. And I think what we're extremely lack on, lacks on is enforcement. We just cut out the proposed inspectors that we were going to have to oversee this, so we really have nothing. And we have to realize that. We reinstituted the 3-1-1 system specifically to give a vehicle for people to call who had a complaint. That's what instigated, I mean, that's what brought it back, but I think we've never really fully figured out how that is to work. We say that one of the requirements is that every short-term rental has to provide us with the name of a contact person who can respond to a complaint within 30 minutes. Well, the idea was that the neighbors, who unfortunately have to be the, or the watchdogs of this, would call 3-1-1 and say, this is what's going on, and then 3-1-1 would forward that complaint to whomever is responsible for getting in touch with the contact person who, within 30 minutes, can see that something is done. Well, that's the theory, but that's not working. And I think we have, we can stand here and we can talk about all of these wonderful ideas, but we don't have anything in place at this point, except calling and expecting the police to go out and do something, and that's just not the way to do this. We have, we have just no way to enforce these things that we're coming up with. And I think if we don't recognize the problems that we have found that we had because of this pandemic, which we didn't even think about at the time, we can see why it's extremely problematic to put twice a week entirely new groups of people into a residential situation who have come from who knows where, and expect that to be compatible with the neighborhood. Now, one of the things that we did along the way of this five years was we had an ad hoc committee, which was very good, that met in the fall of 2016 and came up with a list of recommendations, most of which, of course, were not adopted, but one of them said that we should consider the health and safety requirements to address parity with other transient occupancy providers and to ensure that rental dwellings are reasonably safe. One of the things that came about with a part of that discussion was the situation that these short-term rentals have absolutely no parity with all the requirements that our hotels and motels have to follow for safety issues, particularly fire and health. And we also have to be truly honest to the world that we have absolutely no control over any inspections in these short-term rental situations. I had passed out for you all a copy of an article that I happened to come across about the Flagler area in Florida, and you look at what they are requiring their short-term rentals to do to be safe in response to this pandemic. We can't do the first thing to require that there is any cleanliness, that there is any sanitizing, to require that there is any isolation for people who have come in from a hotspot. And all of these things have been things that have come about recently that I've been getting all kinds of calls about, and I assume the rest of you have too. We don't have any control whatsoever over these units. And if we're going to perpetuate and we're just going to flip down this list and approve, 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 approve these short-term rentals, please be honest, we have no enforcement and we have absolutely no inspections, safety, or health control over these units whatsoever. And people who are coming in and renting these need to know that. I had owners of some of these units call me and say, I don't want my unit rented out to someone from one of these hotspots, and then I have to be concerned that somebody is going to get the virus by staying in my unit. But we had no control over that. And we have not been able to help these folks who have been calling either the renters or the people who are neighbors or anything else. And so, I really think this experience that we've had ought to put us back on square one with trying to figure out how we're going to deal with this and deal with it carefully. I read just a comment from one of the county board of supervisors from either Dara or Currituck that said, we've got to talk about some lessons learned here. I think we need to go back and figure out what are the lessons we have learned and see what the problems are when we're putting these things into our residential neighborhoods, oftentimes within a condo association or a duplex that's right next door. I can't imagine having, well, let's see, a four-bedroom house can have 12 people twice a week. Having 12 people twice a week move in next door to me and all these concerns that we have now, and I just, I know I get pretty upset when I'm talking about this, but it's turned out to be, you know, I kept asking the question, what if we get into this and we find out we've been, we've gone far, too far? How do we undo this? Well, we can't, I guess legally, we've got a lot of problems. But I think when we went to three people per bedroom, which is more than anybody else in the country allows, and twice-a-week rentals, we have really opened up our residential neighborhoods to a tremendous intrusion that now is an extreme health threat. And I'll get off my soapbox and try not to say anything else.
Ms. Wilson.
Bobby, do we know how many complaints have been made at 3-1-1 number?
So, I talked to Stephen Williams, the director of ECCS today. So, they've been in this game already, working with the Commissioner of Revenue to try to enforce the contact information that they have in place for the grandfathered uses. A lot of the complaints that they received, from what he told me, deals with noise complaints, but not necessarily someone saying, I have a complaint about the short-term rental. A lot of the checks that they have, they are on the grandfathered list, and then if they are not on the grandfathered list, the complaints come to us at zoning to log and to put in. We have not gotten a high number of complaints that have come to us, in all honesty, at this point. I think a lot of that has to do with the timing, as far as it not being used, but we have not gotten a high number of complaints.
So, what's not a high number?
I've gotten a lot of calls, maybe we need to talk.
So, what's not a high number?
10. 10. We've received 10 complaints.
Over what period of time?
That was since, in the past two months.
Is that for the whole city, or is that like?
That is for the whole city.
For the whole city.
That is for the whole city.
And what kind of complaints were they?
Do you go through, Kevin, do you want to?
Thank you. We have had a couple complaints about noise and partying at night. A majority of the complaints are about neighbors operating short-term rentals and not being registered and wanting them to get registered.
So, were these, any of these complaints finable, you know, something that you could have given one of these civil fines to?
So, we don't have in place currently the civil fine.
Right, but I mean, let's say we had them in place.
The inspection process, I believe, any of the ones that we've had, we've given notice of, well, actually, what we do is we give, we give those that are in violation letters first, saying that you need to come and apply or register your unit, and then we give them, essentially, we give them the 30-day, that gives them the 30-day clock in order to apply, and then we move forward with further enforcement action after that.
So, I thought that if they were operating illegally, it was a $500 fine.
Not at this time, not yet.
So, what about the ones with noise and?
So, if they, if they are noise complaints and they are registered, 3-1-1 does call the contact number that is there, and they do ask them to, they do tell them they need to get it under control, and if they get a complaint, they will, they will send it, they will send it up. But again, we were trying to not tax our police force for dealing with those types of complaints, especially how difficult a noise complaint is enforced and how it's measured at this point in time, so.
So, we've gotten 10 complaints out of, how many short-term rentals?
On the registered list, there are 739. To be honest with you, I think the last list that I saw from the Commissioner of Revenue, there were on a website, whether they were registered or not, there were over 2,500 or so. I think that was the last number I had at the retreat.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Maust and Ms. Henley.
Well, first, I wouldn't be drawing any conclusions, good or bad, about based on complaints because we have no understanding what the latency is and we have no active outreach to let people know where to call. So, I don't think we understand in any way in a conclusive judgment basis whether we do or do not have a problem. And anecdotal calls that I receive are not statistically representative either, but I think it's, we are, we would be wise not to make conclusions whether we do or not have a problem based on the numbers that we have because of how we collect. I do recall there was an issue that came to my attention that was on a grandfathered piece of property, and I know I shared that with the staff, and you may recall that, and I asked at the time, did we, were we established an electronic repository, electronic diary on that property so at such time that sufficient, and this was with underage people at a party, if you may recall that particular one, which I thought in itself was interesting, and were we collecting a, and creating an electronic diary for that property where all these things could be stored in the future so they could be actionable? And I got some assurance that that was being looked into. Well, that should not be that hard to do, and it should be a higher priority maybe than some other things we're working on. Secondly, I'm not so certain that we can't have, I know I asked taxing 3-1-1 people isn't the same as taxing 911, but I don't know why there can't be a coding, Mr. Mayor and members of my peers here, that when someone knows that that's a complaint, that there's a code, just like medical poop, and that electronic thing gets sent and goes to electronic file, which now captures that residence and then interacts with our GIS system so that we really can have a systematic collection of data, and that is not beyond the, matter of fact, I think with something like over $75 million in cash we're spending in the CIP on IT and information systems, so I hope out of that $75 million, we can find a way to electronically capture and store complaints on 3-1-1. Now, is it possible for people that have these to have to post on their property the 3-1-1 number or residence so that people know this property is a short-term rental or when it is, that this is the number they should call? I mean, that's one way so people know who to call, is that there's a notice on the property telling them where they can call and complain. I noticed in your discussion, and I understand the Commissioner of Revenue is legal issues, but I would, I would like to think in our legislative package, Mr. Mayor, that we'd reach out to Bob Mathias and find out if there's some critical mass of our local state delegates that would propose or support, if we supported it as well, to amend the legislation such that we could get the same type, but maybe fewer details than what the Commissioner of Revenue gets, such that we could get that information and avoid incurring a public expense rather than having direct access for that. That would be a corrective action, I think, that we could take. I said from the very beginning, going back to five years, that putting these in residential neighborhoods was going to be a problem no matter how we did it. It's going to be a problem no matter how we did it. It's a competition of property rights, so we don't go and inspect the health conditions of hotels either, even under this thing, we don't go and look at it. I don't know, I would, I'm not willing to say we have some extreme health situation that could exist, that could exist in a hotel, could exist in a restaurant, it just happened at Great Clips, like somewhere out west. So, I think that's always a risk. I think it's the question of what disclosure statements, to Ms. Henley's point, when someone is going online and renting from one of these places, do they have to disclose so that people won't think or take an inference that there's some kind of government assurance as to the quality, safety, whatever, so they full know that, I guess you could say you buy a house, you know, as-is, well, you're kind of Airbnb at your own risk and as-is. I don't know if that's a disclosure, I've never been to one of those sites, believe it or not, other than to look at them, but... it or not, other than to look at them, but not to go into the details of what their disclosure rental agreements are. But I do think her point, Ms. Henley's point, was well, so that people don't have a belief. This reminds me of, I know many remember when the deck fell at Sandbridge? Remember that? A lot of people got hurt? Well, that's when I learned that if you have a deck, and you have a rental property, you're required to have it inspected by a structural engineer every two years. I had no idea that was a requirement. I don't know how we enforce that, probably don't, but I do remind my mother-in-law, who had a beach house at that time, that, hey, get your deck inspected, that can be expensive, it could cost you your beach home if it fails. So it gets to her point about inspections. So I'd like to know, and we're coming, bringing this back, within our stuff, what stuff is "may" on the part where it's the discretion of the staff and where it shall? Because I'm not going to talk about here today, but I have a Thalia Wayside issue, which I informed you of, Mr. Mayor, retention pond where we have a "may," and it's not in compliance, but we're not doing actively anything about it because of another rezoning application. So I think, where do we have "may"? Where, if we're trying to assure people that the discretion is with the council, not with the staff, and it reads "shall"? Shall do this, shall do that. Because I think that's, because when it's discretion, you may exercise it, but we're the ones held accountable for it. And if I'm going to be held accountable for it, then I want to make sure that I've done the most I can to make sure that it's done. And lastly, can we, you know how they have in some states, we don't do it in Virginia, but they post the scores of restaurants, health scores, you know? Are they required to post violations when they, you know, I'm just, I'm not trying to punish people, but at some point in the process, you know, where does that happen? I'm not, I don't like this, they don't control everything, it shouldn't be like the first thing that they get, that's unfair. And also, there are two sides of every story, but at some point in this process where you've done two or three things and you find them and they want to court, we don't want to abuse that either, because I mean, that's, but down that way, there just has to be some kind of accountability for the owner. And do we have our own timeline for these things? Because if you're going to have enforcement, then when someone has these many violations, at some point you are going to go to court. Now we know that's a, what, about a two-year process, last thing, I think someone explained that to me, that was nothing that happens quickly. But maybe that's another course for a legislative change, because I think that defends the people doing a great job, but doesn't subject people that pulls up the bus with 60 people that get out in Ligonmore and go into a house. I mean, I think there's that. And so I think we've got to make sure that the person that helps stretch out their budget, they're running their property, there's probably 95%, I'll say that, working well. But the 5% are the place we've got to be able to make sure that we have the tools at hand so the public knows that the bad operators don't get to continue to operate, but the vast majority, as the mayor always talks about, the good operators get to continue to operate. But if we don't take care of the bad part, the public's reaction is, and rightfully so, to the anecdotal or their next-door neighbor thing, and they think we aren't, we're not acting proactively to protect the quality of their neighborhood. So I hope that, and also, what, at what percentage, and I know this is in this thing, at what percent of short-term rentals, this gets back to what Mr. Stiles talked about us in the past, at what percentage of short-term rentals is that threshold where the character of the neighborhood is now not a residential neighborhood, but de facto a hotel district? You know, and where is that? You know, if you, if you think about when you buy into a condominium, just because how FHA, other kind of mortgages work, they're always constrained on how many units they can rent out of that building because of the nature of the mortgages, because it's going to affect the value of the place. And so they, even though HOAs are bound by how many they can allow people to rent, well, that may not be the right threshold for us, but I think we need to understand that, Mr. Mayor, as to when, where's the tipping point there that you can look at to know where you, now we are changing fundamentally a neighborhood and turning it into a de facto hotel district. And that's one of the things that I know Mr. Belushi's also talked about, is there isn't knowing your neighbor, and there is that sense of neighborhood, but there's also accommodating cultural change. But at some point, one side totally loses for just market-driven issues, which isn't necessarily what we want for the city. So those are concerns I've heard, I'm sure other members up here in council have heard the very same concerns. So, but that's, I'm interested in effective enforcement of the right things we should be enforcing. I don't want to get into the inspecting the cleanliness of places or that kind of thing, but I do want to make sure that they are complying with what we call our good community neighborhood standards. That's hard to quantify, I understand, it's a big challenge.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Ms. Henley?
You probably answered this, but since I can't hear a thing today for some reason, I would appreciate if you would do a step-by-step, one, two, three, four, okay? A person next door to a short-term rental is observing all kinds of things. I've been telling people, "Call 3-1-1." Apparently, that's not the right thing, because what I keep being told back is that, well, the 3-1-1 operators don't know what to do with what information I'm giving. So, but anyway, tell me step-by-step. So if someone observes something going wrong and somebody is supposed to have this contact name who can make contact within 30 minutes and resolve an issue, how does that happen? Because I think that's clearly a basic part of our ordinance that we have now that's supposed to make certain that we have some kind of oversight. And then we're able to see what particular properties have had complaints and not. But if we don't have that information and it's not retained, then we have no ability to determine, even at time of renewal, whether this particular unit has been a problem or not. But I mean, there was something that was circulated this morning, was it this morning, yesterday, on Nextdoor, about something over the weekend, I sent it to you, Mr. Tahan and some others. And anyway, a lot went on. And it's coming from, it's pretty widespread. And like I say, I think we also found out during this time that even though people were not able to come to use the rental because of governor's requirements and so forth, they were not able to get out of contracts. And there must be something that we can put into these conditions that in the instance of a emergency, a declared emergency, that there has to be some way to deal with it, whether it's an emergency like this or a hurricane, so that someone who has rented for a particular time cannot use the property, apparently there's no way out for them. I don't know. There were a lot of things that have come up over the last two months that we never even thought about envisioning, and I really think we need to try to address before we go forward anymore. I think, you know, it is a whole new world out there now. And I think we, we should have learned a lot of lessons. And I hope we will maybe talk with the folks in other localities, like Dare County, you know, they, right at the very beginning, put up the roadblocks and didn't let anybody into Dare County who was from a hotspot. Well, we couldn't do that, of course, but our folks wanted to know why. And so I really think we need to have some good, strong discussions now about some of these issues that we have found out, that we have, that we didn't know we were going to have, particularly before we go putting them next door to people in all of our neighborhoods all over the city.
Okay, Mr. Tower and then Mr. Belushi.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I want to start by thanking Mr. Stiles and Mr. Tahan, who I've been talking to off and on over a couple of months now and been very responsive to my concerns. A number of good points have been made about the problems in various locations, but I really want to talk more to the fundamental issues about short-term rentals and the protection The City of Virginia Beach's regulation of short-term rentals is quite liberal by my research, looking at a number of, I could, it's hard to find a city that has fewer regulations of any kind than Virginia Beach does for short-term rentals. So we start with a very liberal sort of condition. Now, we have these conditional use permits for the ones that weren't grandfathered to deal with, but we've set what our kind of minimum standards are for those, and we've yet to determine what our, where our choking point is. But I started thinking about this a lot with regard to, frankly, the Old Beach District, because I knew it had been, there had been efforts made to protect the Old Beach District as a residential neighborhood that was in the path of development of the resort area, but had a character of its own and a very long history and provided a lot of affordable housing for folks that wanted to live near the resort or work in the resort. And it was something that made, one of those things that made Virginia Beach great, as we say. I had three main issues when I saw what was happening with short-term rentals. There, one, and you've already heard about, was the party house issue, which was very disturbing, because that neighborhood does not lend itself by residents or short-term, long-term, or any other kind of residents of having the kinds of parties where we had a 50-person limit in the house. It just was inapplicable, and we were able to tack that on first by conditional use permits and now kind of permanently, so it was good. The second issue I was concerned about, and spent a lot of time talking and thinking about, was how do we keep a neighborhood like the Old Beach District not so, I was not so much concerned about the parties or the enforcement, that's my number-three issue, but on my number-two issue was, how do you put some limit on the conversion of these properties, which were either owner-occupied or leased, long-term leases, typically year-type leases, into short-term rentals so that, because we are a seasonal resort, and while we've been successful in pushing the season out and are now trying to even make it a 12-month year, we still will always be a seasonal resort, given our, given our climate, at least for the foreseeable future. What's it going to be like in the wintertime, for example, to have a neighborhood that is pretty deserted, except for a few hangers-on, and that neighborhood will be gone? It will clearly have passed. So I talked to and thought about capping the number of units in a defined neighborhood or saying that you couldn't build another, have another short-term rental within a certain distance of an existing short-term rental as a way to spread it out. For various reasons, none of those seemed to work very well. And what I eventually got back with Mr. Tahan's and Mr. Stiles' help and guidance to the, probably what most cities have done, or many cities have done, is try to protect these neighborhoods with a permanent residence requirement. It's not necessarily easy to enforce, but it's something that is enforceable. I think there are ways, people, people that are gone from this state for more than six months will have difficulty proving that they're a permanent resident of Virginia Beach. So I think it is, I think it has the potential to be enforceable, not necessarily that it'll be easy, but easier than many of the others and a pretty fair, uniform system. So the third issue is enforceability. And I think having a structured fine system and engaging, I think a critical part of this is engaging this third-party vendor who can provide the data that you need to have a fair and complete enforceable system so that people are not running roughshod over the system. That doesn't begin to answer all the questions, and many that have been raised here today all need to be addressed. But just on the fundamentals, I think the Old Beach District, for one, because I'm familiar with it, and Shadow Lawn, which I'm also familiar with, and which is not an overlay district, but which is clearly a neighborhood that, where, that is threatened, if you will, by these same factors. Those are two that I'm very concerned about. But starting with the Old Beach District, it's my intention to introduce some ordinances to get, to get the Old Beach District as a starter. I invite anybody, though, to join in with that, to talk about other neighborhoods it might, ought to be, but I think we need to move ahead. We have got 100 of these in the pipeline, and my intention is to let the people that are permanent residents use these as a matter of right. People have been renting out rooms in their homes since the beginning of time. It is, it is not a new phenomenon. The new phenomenon is non-residents, non-owner-occupied, or not building, buying, converting long-term rentals into short-term rentals, building short-term rentals. And that's what I worry about, running kind of roughshod over it. So I want to move ahead with this, and I want to give notice to the, as soon as possible. I don't, I really don't want to be unfair to anybody that's got applications in the pipeline, but I don't want to encourage people to continue to file these. I want to kind of put them on notice that, that those, you may, if you're thinking about buying one or you're thinking about converting one, just know we're having these discussions and that there's going to come a time when you may not be able to get, get that kind of permitting. I guess that's all I've got to say today. I hope we go forward with it.
Thank you, Mr. Tower. Mr. Belushi.
Well, thank you. And I'm glad we've been, had, we've had a chance to revisit this discussion after a couple of months. The people I speak with say pretty clearly that they want their neighborhoods to remain intact. And so that's the, that's the focus of my interest in this discussion, as it has been throughout the time that I've had a chance to participate, which has been about one of the five years that it's been a matter of discussion for this council in our community. I'm extremely concerned about the impact that short-term rentals have on the fabric of our communities, on our, the culture of our neighborhoods, and as well as on our schools. I think they have, could have a substantial adverse impact on all of those things. But I do have a couple of specific questions for Mr. Tahan. If you could speak for my benefit, as well as for those who are watching, a little bit more about the overlay districts and about what is your vision for, how those could be, could be utilized to protect the neighborhoods as you discussed. So for example, would an overlay district be restrictive or permissive in terms of what the regulations would be?
So it could, it could be either way. So the current way that ordinance is written allows for neighborhoods to opt in with an overlay district, to be allowed to have short-term rentals in their area, if they get enough people to zone it with an overlay district. With this approach, we're utilizing existing overlay districts and identifying those districts as areas that, one, are either identified as having a history of having short-term rentals, and it would be okay to be there, continue to be there, or to limit short-term rentals. So it can be, it can be augmented to meet either requirement. But it could be to the point where you could say only in the overlay districts is where you could allow them, and everywhere else, they could not be allowed unless it meets a high standard or high criteria.
But that's if that neighborhood opts in.
Or it could be by, hypothetically. Hypothetically. Or it could be by conditional, it could be that the conditional use permit, instead of being 100 items that we look at, are the one-off applications where someone really wants to have one somewhere, and they think that they, they actually think that they should be in that location, to utilize the conditional use permit the way it's meant to be, where you're able to look at it on its merits by itself and know that there are other locations that it's okay, but not okay, and other places where you have to meet a higher standard.
Because I guess we're, I mean, if, so, I mean, I would be, have some concern about how the implementation of an overlay district program implementation of an overlay district program would have on the surrounding districts. So if there's a higher restriction in, say, the resort communities or bayfront communities that, if those restrictions exist there, then the applications would potentially increase in districts like Rose Hall, for example, or in other parts of the city where they're not as highly concentrated. But I would be very much interested in that discussion. I think it makes sense to allow neighborhoods to, at least to explore the idea of allowing neighborhoods to opt in, because then we'll really get a sense of what is the interest of the community for operating short-term rentals. So I think that's something that's important. And also the transition rules, I agree with some of the sentiments that have been shared. At some point, we have to make some decisions. And you proposed a timeline that's reasonable and that's appropriate for this type of discussion, but that's, we're looking at at least three or four months from now. And as the word gets out that applications, that these policies could change and that we're being, you know, relatively, we're being more inclined to allow, we keep approving, basically. We keep approving, as Ms. Henley said, we keep approving and approving these applications on the existing, on the basis of the existing ordinance. And at some point, I think we have to be mindful that we are going to be making amendments and that we're going to have to move quickly and make some decisions. And so I don't know where my personal line is in terms of what that standard is, but I think we need to be thinking of what that transition is going to look like.
And Mr. Berluci, to add on to it, staff identified the overlay districts that currently exist in special zoning categories that have protections in them because those areas already are pre-identified, already have regulations in place, and it would be amendment to the code. In order to do a rezoning of mass property, it would require a substantial public outreach, which would be way outside of any timeline to move quickly at this point in time.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Tower?
Thanks. And kind of following up on what Mr. Berluci said and Mr. Tower, you know, on Slide 10, if you can switch to that for a second.
Put the slide up, please.
And I've had this discussion with a couple of folks on council. I really think we need to go with an overlay district system sooner rather than later. For the most part, those areas that you have listed there as examples are areas that traditionally have had short-term rentals, whether they've been people renting their homes or whether they've been just houses that have been short-term rentals for years and years and years and years. I think the specific thing that's important about those districts is the line that you have above there that certain, are specifically identified because of where they are. And actually, there was another line you had, the page before, where it says, "STR located in an area in close proximity to venues, business districts, areas, things that generate high volume." I mean, you know, for the most part, people are not going to want to stay in an STR, you know, down by the courthouse if they're going to the beach. I mean, they're just not. And I think that's, I think that's the thing. And I think it's part of what Mr. Berluci says about preserving the neighborhoods. Frankly, I think it needs to be a lot more difficult in the neighborhoods to get this done. And in the same respect, I think perhaps it needs to be either a by-right thing based on these overlay districts or a little bit more permissive because these are existing businesses and frankly, you know, I think there's probably a lot going on that we don't know about, that haven't been registered, and there's a lot that's been going on for decades and decades and decades. I mean, you know, I don't think you can talk to anybody that's lived in Virginia Beach for any length of time that doesn't know that you can rent a house by the week at the North End. I mean, that's just the way it's been. But they're also in some of these, like for example, the North End. If you remember back, and Michael, you said you've only been here for one of the five years. You all remember, one of the things that the North End said was their big issue was no more than one rental per week. That was their big issue. And when I've spoke to people from the civic leagues up there, they're not so concerned about the parking up there as much as they are concerned about the one rental per week. And I think other places probably have different things, different concerns. And I talked to the city attorney about this a month or so ago, about how we could do this. And I think if it's possible, you know, we could take these overlays, these areas, and same with what Mr. Tower said, and craft, you know, specific ordinances, if I'm correct, Mr. Stiles, with specific restrictions and requirements and things like that, and then put those in place, and then kind of ratchet down on CUPs throughout the rest of the city in order to protect the neighborhoods. I mean, I've said this before, and I really don't like this idea of using garages for parking and this one where the guy rents a place, what, a half-mile away, and a parking deck. I mean, that's just not acceptable because nobody's going to use that, and it's going to impact the neighbors. And I think that's what we need to look at because even in the areas that are the traditional areas where it would be, we need to absolutely make sure that it doesn't impact even the neighborhoods there. So that's the approach I'd like to see us do. I'd like us to attack these four or five overlay districts and then take a look at the rest of the city. But I really think we need to do that sooner rather than later because the more of these things we approve with the various restrictions, like for example, and I thought one of the recommendations was going to be the thing that Mr. Tower started putting on each one of them. I don't, maybe it's in here, maybe I skimmed past it, but no more than the number of people that can sleep in there can be in there, so basically no parties. And that's kind of the way that we get away from at least part of the complaints that we have there. But, you know, I mean, other communities do these in Virginia and all around, and I think it's certainly workable. It certainly is a source of revenue for us. It's a new source of revenue. In a lot of cases, people probably haven't been paying transient occupancy taxes before a couple of years ago, so now we get that. And, you know, there is a demand for it. But I think we really need to focus on these overlays and then the rest of the city. I mean, I think that's what we need to do.
Mr. Jones.
Well, I think it's interesting. When we first started this process, I introduced an ordinance to be discussed and for possibility of being approved by city council that basically does exactly what you just described, Mr. Wood.
That's where I heard of it.
And we've gone all around it because of whatever reasons and not come to the conclusion that that's where we ought to be. And so what I would ask, Mrs. Wilson, would you please pull out that ordinance and make sure everybody on the council gets a copy of it so that the next time we have this discussion, that we can focus in on the subject and try to resolve the matter? But the bottom line is, there's an ordinance that's already been drawn up, that I had drawn up when we first started doing this thing, that accomplishes what Mr. Wood has just described. And so, or comes pretty close to it. So I would ask that staff make some copies of that. I'm sure Ms. Wilson still has a copy of it somewhere.
I'm sure I do, sir.
And get it out to the council so the council can have it. It addresses the issues you brought up, Mr. Berluci. It addresses the issues that Mr. Tower brought up to a certain extent. His comments are a little bit more liberal than what that ordinance describes, but I think it would be a good starting point again for us to get at the issue and try to resolve it. I will make a couple of other comments, and that is that we're not going to be able to satisfy everybody. And we're going to have to make some decisions and make them firm and decide what we're going to do and what we're not going to do. Because the staff keep struggling with trying to figure out what we want them to do. And, you know, it's, you've got to come to a decision sooner or later. Otherwise, you're going to just, without, within decision, what's going to happen is what I described at the retreat. Our neighborhoods are going to go into deterioration as a result of this very complicated and destructive issue. And we've got to make a decision and be firm about it and get it over with. And so I would ask that you bring that forward, if you will, Ms. Wilson or Mr. Stiles, so that the council can see it again and try to make some decisions on the issue. Thank you.
Anybody else? Ms. Wilson.
I think there's been some really great discussion here. I think, too, we still need to grapple with the people that are in the pipeline and the applications, what we do with them. And perhaps we need to just draw a line in the sand and say, those people who are not in there, that we're not going to take anymore, and then deal with the ones while we deal with this. But in a way, it's not fair for the people who've gone through everything and they've done everything we've asked them to do that we don't consider them. So I personally think we should go ahead and deal with the ones that have applied and jumped through all the hoops and done everything that we've asked and dealt with them, but say no more until we figure out where we're going from here. That's my suggestion.
Okay, anybody else? Okay, if this forward, Bobby, I think, you know, let's go ahead at the request of Council Members Jones and Wood to bring those forward, you know, for consideration. That could be a short-term approach. And then even on a, not a long-term approach, but, you know, a little longer, we have to deal with, you know, some of the housing, you know, into the neighborhoods, and we should deal with those. And I do agree with Council Lady Wilson that the folks in the pipeline, but, you know, once again, I think we have to have a, you know, a timeline that, you know, once again, give them the consideration, do that they're trying to do the legal thing. And once again, we're going to have a lot of people who are probably in the city that are in non-compliance, but, you know, that's something we can cross later. But I think, and moving forward right now, you know, I think in looking at the overlay districts is a first step that we can at least get the ball moving and then, you know, get that determination about, you know, the concerns about protecting the neighborhoods. Mr. Moss.
Can we ask the staff to come back to the, whether we do anything or not, we have this stuff that's in place, but how we're going to make 3-1-1 effective and how we're going to have an effective database that allows us to capture so that we can't have meaningful enforcement and we do have a track record? They may not be able to do it today, but I'd like to know how we're going to get to where we are where we're not. We don't have systematic tracking, and we don't have systematic outreach of where to call, but how we can get to a plan that allows us to have effective enforcement of what we have.
And I think along with Mr. Moss's suggestion, with our new IT capacities, that we may have a more effective way of letting the neighbors of these properties know what the resources are that they can use, you know, that might be effective. You know, it's a multi-pronged approach we're going to have to use. Mrs. Henley.
Well, our proposed budget did have a planner that was supposed to deal with short-term rentals and three inspectors, and they were all cut out. So I think we have to face the fact that if we're going to continue this process, we're going to really have to have some additional help to do that, or I'm not sure that it's can be done within the current staffing level.
And I think if we, yeah, Mr. Wood.
So to follow up on that, and I don't know if this, I guess this is Mr. Stiles's question to investigate, do we have the capacity or ability to create any other sort of revenue from short-term rentals to pay for part of this? I mean, are we limited on the transient occupancy tax and that amount? I mean, is, does it have to be the same for hotels as short-term rentals, or how does that work? I'd want to look at that a little bit before I gave you an answer.
Okay. All right. Anybody else? I think if that be the good first step is, you know, we can get the overlay ordinances back on the table for discussion and possible action, very near future. Is that agreed? Okay, is there anybody else? Any other discussion? Thank you all. We are adjourned.